I'd like to remind everybody to please silence or turn off your cell phones for the city council meeting, please. We're gonna start here in about thirty- ...to order the Wheatridge City Council Meeting of July 8th, 2013. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the city clerk please take role?
Joyce J.
Here.
Joseph Demott.
Present.
Mike Stites. Kristy Davis.
Here.
Davis Reinhardt.
Here.
Tracy Langworthy.
Here.
Bud Starke.
Present.
And George Pond.
Present.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of June 24th, 2013?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the minutes by Mr. Stites. It was seconded by Mr. Starke. Discussion on the minutes. Uh, please poll the council.
Motion carries eight zero.
I thank you. We have two proclamations tonight. I'd like to call up Chief Casa and Jason Neely and family. Come on up, please. We have a citizen award from our police department. Division Chief Casa.
Sir. Thank you very much. Alright, uh, we're here to present a citizens' award to Mr. Jason Neely. Uh, it is the privilege and the honor of the police department to bestow this, uh, award, uh, upon Mr. Neely. On June 14th, 2013, Officer Tyler Josephek conducted a traffic stop in the entrance to Trailer Source located at 11,00808 West 44th Avenue. During the contact, Sergeant John Pickett learned that the passenger was lying about his name and was possibly wanted on two felony no bond warrants. Officer Josephek and Sergeant Pickett attempted to take the male subject into custody. The male resisted arrest. Due to the hot weather conditions and the amount of perspiration coming from both the male and the officers, it became very difficult to maintain control of the suspect. You are an employee of Trailer Source and observed what was taking place. You ran over to the officer's location and grabbed the male's legs, helping the officers get him to the ground. While on the ground, you advised Officer Josephek that you were getting his handcuffs out. You then assisted Officer Josephek in getting the handcuffs on the suspect. After the suspect was in custody, you informed Officer Josephek that you were formerly in law enforcement in California. You went above and beyond and placed yourself in danger in assisting Officer Josephek and Sergeant Pickett in taking a resistive male into custody. For your assistance, you are being awarded the Wheatridge Police Department Citizen Award and Police Ceremonial Challenge Coin. Thank you very much.
I'd like to ask Tim Peranto to please step forward here for a minute. We have a proclamation for Tim. As you know, Tim is retiring here. And so we have a proclamation for Mr. Peranto. He's been our Public Works Director for a number of years. So the proclamation is an appreciation of Tim Peranto in recognition of his commitment to excellence and dedicated service to the citizens of Wheatridge. And so whereas the mayor and city council of the city of Wheatridge desire to formally express appreciation to Tim Peranto, who has served the city of Wheatridge in a dedicated manner, and whereas Tim began his employment with the city of Wheatridge on December 28th, 2002, as a public works director, and whereas Tim has provided ten years of performance and professionalism as a public servant in public works, and throughout his career, he has demonstrated a strong support of the goals and organizational values of the city, and whereas during Tim's tenure as Public Works Director, city streets have been known by many to be the cleanest, the best plowed, and the safest after major snowstorms, and whereas Tim was willing to go the extra mile for his staff participating in the annual employee Halloween costume contest, no matter how humiliating, whereas it is fitting in conjunction with Tim's retirement from the city of Wheatridge that we formally recognize his many contributions, his value to the Public Works Department and the city, and express to him our sincere thanks for a job well done. Now therefore be resolved that on behalf of the city council and the people of city of Wheatridge, I, Jerry DeTulio, Mayor of the city of Wheatridge Colorado, by virtue of the authority vested in me to hereby recognize and thank Tim Peranto for his ten years of service to the city of Wheatridge. Congratulations, Tim. Tim is very shy and doesn't want to say anything tonight, so. So congratulations to Jason and congratulations to Tim. The next item on the agenda is citizens' right to speak. Citizens who wish may speak on any matter that is not on the agenda for a matter, for a maximum of three minutes. Uh, please step forward to the podium if you're here to speak on any item that's not on the agenda. Uh, Mr. Schultz, please play your last name for the record.
I'm Larry Schultz. That's spelled S-C-H, excuse me, U-L-Z. And I come before you tonight to publicize, put in a plug for an event coming up this weekend here in Wheatridge. It's the 11th Annual Adoption Party hosted by the Brown Dog School, uh, Dog Training and Grooming School. Uh, this will happen at 44th and Jellison, which is, the address is 9900 West 44th Avenue. It's from 10:00 AM, 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Um, all the sponsors there of animals will be bringing rescue dogs. Uh, several rescue groups will be represented. You'll see dogs of every shape, color, and size. And, uh, a lot of folks have met their best friend at this event over the years. Uh, so I hope you'll come and, uh, and join us. Their food will be available. Uh, there will be raffles, and you're welcome to bring some canned food, blankets, collars, leashes, shampoo, you get the idea, to donate, uh, toward, uh, the rescue groups. Thank you very much. Hope to see you there. Thanks.
Do we have anybody else here to speak on public comment on any item that's not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to a- For public comment or for our agenda item? Please step forward. Please play your last name for the record and, uh, please state your city or your address. This is for an item that's not on the agenda, correct? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Brenda Hurley, H-U-R-L-E-Y. I live at 4090 Fenton Court in Wheatridge. And actually, I just, my comment is, uh, I want to express my appreciation for our Wheatridge Police Department. Recently, uh, since probably early May, we've had an increased level of vandalism in the area, uh, possible attempted break-ins, thefts, and I just want to really, um, commend our Wheatridge Police Department for their prompt response and, uh, that they've given to us. And I feel, I feel like they've really taken us seriously, and we've seen higher patrolling in the area, and I really appreciate it. And they were wonderful, outstanding officers as usual, and I, and I wanted to take a moment to just, uh, show our appreciation. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any other folks to speak under public comment on any item that's not on the agenda? Okay, we'll move on to approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda tonight? Seeing none, the general stand is published. The next item on the agenda is public hearings and ordinances on second reading. And what I wanted to let the crowd know is that, uh, there's a council rule that says that there shall be no time limit applied to citizens' right to speak on agenda items unless deemed appropriate by the chair. So tonight, if we're speaking items number two or number three, the time limit per person will be three minutes. So please, uh, note that I'll be, uh, timing that for three minutes per person on items two and three.
Mr. Mayor, um, there was some discussion on the budget, 2014 budget.
Right, so now we're gonna go on to, uh, the next item on the agenda is to public comment on the budget. So please step forward. If you have any comments or on the budget, we're having our public hearings now on the 2014 budget. Ted, were you here for the budget tonight? Okay. You always hear about the budgets. I thought you were tonight. Pardon? Okay, so we'll move on to, um, item number one. I'm gonna open the public hearing. It's council bill number 09-2013. Mr. Demott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill Number 09-2013, An Ordnance Reappointing Presiding Municipal Judge Christopher Randall, Increasing His Hourly Compensation, and Approving a Presiding Municipal Judge Services Agreement. City's Home Rule Charter provides for appointment of the municipal court judge for a term of two years. The current term of presiding Judge Christopher Randall expires July 1st, 2013. Is the motion in order?
No, this is a public hearing. So now we have to get in this, Mr. Um, Rowan, would you please give us a ordinance number?
Yes, it's ordinance 1539-1539.
Thank you. Staff presentation, Mr. Dahl.
Uh, not much more than what's in the, um, what's in the council action form. Council, I think, met with the judge in study session, so you've, you've had a pretty good description, I think, of the work of the court. This, the judge's present rate's been in effect as the council action form states since, uh, 2007. Be happy to answer any questions, but I know the judge is here, and I encourage him to sign up so that, uh, he'd be available for, for you to answer any additional questions you might have.
Move on to public comment. Do we have anybody here to speak on item number one tonight? From the public? Move on to council questions discussion? Do we have any council questions or discussion? Mr. Demott?
With our city manager out of town, I'm not sure who I'm gonna ask this question to, but, um-
The presiding city manager is Mr.-
The presiding city manager. Um, is, uh, contract, regarding contract employees, how does the stipend, if the, uh, pay for performance, I know last year they, we had a stipend instead of a raise for regular employees, how does that affect contract employees?
It's my understanding that there was no, um, compensation, uh, or salary adjustments. Obviously, they're subject to the contract, so, uh, none of those items apply to the judge's salary, though they do apply to the employees within his department. He serves his department, Ed.
You may want to ask the judge, did you get a stipend, the, the two stipends that the-
Set the 500 slash 1,000? Yes.
Was that last year?
It was this year.
Okay. The one that was recently authorized.
Okay.
Any other questions or discussion on the contract for the judge? I'm gonna close the hearing on motions in order.
I move to approve Council Bill Number 09-2013, An Ordnance Reappointing Presiding Municipal Judge Christopher Randall, Increasing His Hourly Compensation, and Improving, Approving a Presiding Municipal Judge Services Agreement on Second Reading, and that it take effect upon adoption at second reading as permitted by the charter.
Second. We have a motion to approve item number one. It was seconded by Mr. Pond. Discussion? Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. Move on to item number two. It's Resolution Number 23-2013. I'm gonna open the public hearing. Ms. Davis?
Thank you. Resolution Number 23-2013, A Resolution Approving a Two-Lot Subdivision Platte with a Right-of-Way Dedication for Properties Zoned Residential 3 and Neighborhood Commercial located at 5801 West 38th Avenue slash 4,000 Fenton Court. Case number MS-13-02 Incarnation. Issue, the applicant is requesting approval of a two-lot subdivision plat for property zone R3 and NC at 5801 West 38th Avenue, 4,000 Fenton Court. The purpose of the request is to prepare the site for development of 26 new residences and to dedicate street right-of-way.
Uh, thank you. If you're here to speak on item number two, I need to swear you in, so please stand and raise your right hand for number, item number two. Do you swear to tell the truth in this matter? Thank you. Remember, this will be a three-minute per person on public comment because this has been heard by the planning commission several times. We'll move on to the staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. For the record, Meredith Record, Wheatridge Community Development Department. And of course, joining me at the staff tables are Ken Johnstone, Director of Community Development, Gerald Dahl, City Attorney, and Tim Peranto, the Director of Public Works. Case number MS-12-0, excuse me, MS-13-02 is a, is a request for approval of a two-lot subdivision for property at 5801 West 38th Avenue and 4,000 Fenton Court. I'd like to enter into the record the case file and packet materials, uh, the zoning ordinance and the contents of this digital presentation.
Except-
The property is within the city of Wheatridge, and all proper posting notification requirements have been met. Therefore, a council does have jurisdiction to hear this case. So, again, because this is, uh, a plat with a right-of-way dedication, Planning Commission provided a recommendation to city council, who is the final authority for, uh, this particular case, and I would note that, um, a neighborhood meeting is not required prior to the submission of an application for a subdivision. So, on the, on the screen is an image that shows the property outlined in turquoise. Uh, this is a 2012 photo. And, um, let's see, the, the address is 5801 West 38th Avenue slash 4,000 Fenton Court. It is owned primarily residential 3. Um, it's what we call a flag lot, which it means there is a big portion of the property with a, with what we would call the pole that connects down to 38th Avenue. And this particular strip is sixteen and a half feet wide and extends about 650 feet to the south. The main portion of the property, which is located at the termini of West 39th Place and Fenton Court, is about 2.26 acres in size. And including the flag pole portion of the lot, it's about two and a half acres. Um, the, the site was historically used for growing carnations, and you can see in the photo that there were existing buildings on the site when this was taken. Those structures on the western portion were recently demolished. There's also a structure at the very northeast corner of the site, and, um, that is the original house on the property, which was built in 1877, and it is intended that, uh, that, uh, structure remain and be incorporated into the development. Um, the reason for the 38th Avenue, um, address is that the primary access into the carnation site was from 38th Avenue. Okay, again, we're looking at a 2012 aerial with the zoning overlay on it. Again, the property is outlined in blue, and it is fairly embedded within a residential neighborhood, although there are a mix of use, uh, residential uses surrounding it. Um, you can see that, uh, a lot of the picture on the left-hand side of the image is, um, is, uh, orange in color, and that designates R3. Um, so we've got R3 to the north, south, and west with single and two-family homes surrounding the property, and we've also got some existing multifamily off to the northwest of the site. To the east, which is sort of a, kind of a greenish-brown color that designates R1A on the zoning map, and, uh, those are single-family homes on large lots which have frontage on Eaton Street and then go all the way through. So the, the zoning on the property is R3, which allows high-density residential, and it does allow a density of about 12 units per acre. So given the net size of the property, um, they can have illegally 26 residential units on the site. I would point out that there's a small portion about halfway down the pole, down to 38th Avenue, there is, um, a portion that is owned, um, neighborhood commercial. It doesn't really, uh, do anything to the density allowances. So, um, this, this picture is standing on 38th Avenue, looking, um, up the alley. On, on the, uh, eastern, excuse me, the western side is the red tango building, and on the other side is an existing single-family residence. So moving further up the alley or the pole portion, and again, um, on the, on both sides, we've got existing single-family residential development. On the east side are those properties that front on Eaton Street and go all the way through to the subject site. Here, I'm standing on 39th Place, looking to the east. Now I'm looking west on 39th Place. Um, now I'm on Fenton Court, uh, looking north towards the site at the end of the street. And this is an aerial perspective that we took from Google Maps, which shows a pretty good orientation. Again, you can see the, the property outline. There are those two existing greenhouses that were recently demolished. 39th Place comes in from the west, from Harland Street at Dead Ends, right at the property line, and also Fenton extends south from 41st Avenue and Dead Ends at the property line. So, uh, the document we're looking at tonight is a plat document. It is composed of two sheets. Sheet one, as you're probably aware, I always call the declaration sheet, and that contains the legal descriptions and required signature blocks, uh, not only for, uh, cities, but the, uh, the owners and Jefferson County for the recording. It also, uh, contains our standard notes regarding easements and detention pond maintenance. The real meat and potatoes of the, the plat is the second page, which shows the layout of the, the subdivision. Now, the subdivision really only depicts- Now, the subdivision really only depicts two parcels, and, um, if you, if you heard what I said prior, that there are going to be 26 units on the site, um, they are going to be sold condominium-style, where the interior space is, is divided up, but not the land area, and as such, we only have the two, the two lots. Uh, the homeowners association will be responsible for maintaining the exteriors of the units and all of the grounds associated with it. Lot one, which is the smaller uni, or the smaller parcel, which is up in the northwest corner, will contain sing, uh, four single-family homes. Lot two is the larger one that extends in this area, and it also includes the pole portion of the lot that extends south to 38th Avenue. Um, structure, structures included on lot two will include three single-family homes, a duplex, uh, a two, uh, series of row houses, and another three duplexes. And I would point out that both of the lot sizes are consistent with our three, uh, density requirements. There is an existing sanitary sewer, which runs north and south across the property in this location, and that is being accommodated, and I would point out that this area, uh, will not allow any development, uh, it will be primarily open space with no permanent structures located on it. Again, uh, the flag pole portion, as I, um, indicated previously, is about 650 feet long and extends from the south of the, kind of what I call the main portion of the property down to 38th Avenue. It is 16 and a half feet wide, and while it did provide historical access to the site, it's really not wide enough to accommodate a full roadway section. And, uh, based on testimony at, um, at Planning Commission, there were some issues as to how this piece of the property should be used. Historically, those folks who lived on Eaton Street with the lots that back up to this area have used it as a private access to their rear lots. Many of those lots are a couple hundred feet deep and are, um, the only way they can get to them is through this alley portion, so, uh, the design was modified to allow a public pedestrian easement and a private, um, access easement, uh, for those folks on, who need to use that. And my red circles on, um, on the image do indicate that reservation language that we included to make sure that this can happen. This is a, uh, close-up of the section of the street layout. Again, um, Fenton Court and West 39th Place come in, and they both dead-end at the property boundaries. Uh, north is to, to, to the top, so Fenton Court, you can see the cul-de-sac bulb that comes in and just stops at, at that northern property line. Likewise, 39th Place comes in from the west and stops at, um, that westerly most property line. Um, they are proposed to be extended to intersect in the property with a right-of-way width of 47 feet. It's considered a local street. Um, Fenton is 50 feet in width, however, 39th Place is substandard, being only 30, uh, 30 feet of right-of-way, so the new roadway section will have to taper where it approaches the western property line, and the sidewalks that will be built with the subdivision, um, will say, will have the same roadway width, but those sidewalks will taper to align with those on 39th Place. There's been a lot of discussion about traffic with this development. We've got two adjacent neighborhoods, they've both been there since probably the 50s or so, and neither of them want more traffic. Um, the Fenton Court people aren't, aren't thrilled about having traffic, traffic on their street, they'd like to see it all come from 39th Place, and the 39th Place folks, they don't want more traffic, and they want it all to come from Fenton Court. Now, in staff's opinion, this design is probably the most equitable, because we've got two streets, the traffic will be dispersed both ways, instead of funneling it onto one street or the other. This is a cross-section of the proposed, uh, street design through the property. Again, it's considered a local street with 47 feet of right-of-way. Um, it will accommodate two lanes of travel, um, a separated sidewalk with a five-foot tree, tree lawn on both sides, and also a five, five-foot sidewalk. Uh, drainage on this site, um, it's been designed to provide storm inlets in the street so that it will collect runoff from the parking areas, the drives, and then be piped, um, into an underground storage tank. Other area inlets will collect water from the grass area and dis- discharge directly into that same tank. Uh, the water from that tank will then be released to the north, uh, to Fenton Court in a storm sewer. And again, because we don't, we, you know, most of it's underground detention, we only have one, uh, large detention easement in this location right here, and it is shown, again, on the plat as an easement. Let's see, all of the responding agencies can serve the property with improvements at, uh, the developer's expense. Um, a particular note, uh, Public Works has reviewed the drainage and traffic plans, and they believe that the existing street system can handle the traffic generated. And then, probably, the other, um, referral responsive note is that from the Parks Department, they are recommending fees and leave land dedication for park, parkland needs based on, uh, the increased population in the development. Typically, this amount is based on, uh, anticipated value of the land after entitlements have been approved and subdivision improvements, um, have been installed, and, uh, those fees would be required prior to the issuance of a building permit for the first structure. Um, the applicant is requesting an appeal of this recommendation, and they have included a written justification, which was included in your packet, and, uh, would like to speak with you about that this evening. Let's see, Planning Commission, um, there were two other, uh, associated cases with this. Um, they both involved a site plan of approval called the Plan Building Group Plan. It did include variances related to setback, and both of those, uh, particular cases, uh, are the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. It does not, they do not forward onto city council, and both of those were approved, uh, the variances on May 16th, and the Plan Building Group Site Plan on June 20th. They did, uh, Planning Commission did give a recommendation of approval for the subdivision on June 20th as well, as well, for the following reasons. It's consistent with the design shown on the site plan they approved. It reflects the historical use of the alley by the adjacent property owners on Eaton Street. Uh, the requirements of Article Four of the subdivision regulations have been met, and the utility districts can serve with improvements installed at the developer's expense. A couple of conditions. The one of, uh, note is that, uh, staff review and approve the HOA covenants for maintenance for the common elements in the development, so that we can make sure there's adequate, adequate, uh, maintenance. Staff, in closing, staff is, um, has concluded that the plat is consistent with the prior approvals granted by Planning Commission. We've concluded that the proposed street network disperses traffic instead of funneling it onto one street or the other. Uh, we finally conclude that the plat honors the hysteric, historic, not hysteric, the historic alley use of those folks who live on Eaton Street by, um, allowing that to be a public pedestrian easement, as well as a private access easement, and we are giving a recommendation of approval. That concludes staff comments. I would be happy to answer questions when you're ready.
Thank you. We'll move on to, uh, the applicant. Please step forward if you have anything to make comments. Please spell your last name for the record and state your city or your address.
My name is Mark Young, 621 17th Street, Denver, Colorado, 80293.
Please spell your last name for the record.
Young, Y-O-U-N-G.
Thank you.
So, the, I think you heard everything from staff as to why I think it ought to be approved. I'd like to tell you just a little bit about our company and what we do. I work for a company called Urban Green Development, and we are a B Corporation. What a B Corporation is, is we're a benevolent corporation. Tomorrow, we're going through, Keith and I are going through our B Lab, where we are judged as employees...
Excuse me a second. Could someone please turn off their cellphone or their iPod or iPad? I heard beep in the back there, and it's really disrupting the, the hearing. Thank you. Sorry.
As a B Corporation, we're judged on three things, and our job critique will be based on planet, people, and profit. First, do no harm to the environment. Second, make sure that the population, the people that we interact with are satisfied with their interactions with us. And third, um, produce a profit for the company so that we can be truly sustainable. The project that we've designed here, we've named it Incarnation for a couple of reasons. We thought it was a cute play on the word carnation, and it's also resembles what we do. We reincarnate things. There's an acronym at the end of Incarnation, CSC, and the CSC stands for Conscious Sustainable Community. Every one of the houses will have solar panels on the roof, it'll be a very sound construction. We build to exceed lead performance standards, and, um, we try to do it in a, in a price range that everybody can afford. You know, we're not anticipating prices over $400,000 for the single-family homes, and we expect row homes to be in the twos, and we hope that, uh, you know, the market will support that. One of the things, it's very expensive to do what we do. If you look at the site plan, that, uh, maybe I could put it up there, maybe not, where you saw the drainage, um, the drainage easement, we could have put in a detention pond. Now, a detention pond is not very usable. That's not nice to have around, it just, it's, it's just not attractive to the site, and it reduces the usability of the land, and that would be counter to what we are doing. Consequently, we've designed below-ground detention. Now, that's, there's two things about that. It's really expensive, and it costs money to maintain. So, why would we do that? Because it's valuable to preserve the land, to make it available to the people. The, it, it just provides for a better, higher-quality community, and I think one of the things we talked about at, uh, Planning Commission was that the development standards that were set by the city, we exceeded every one of them, from open space to landscaping, you name it, tree counts, shrub counts, everything. And that's all to provide for a quality of life that we think is important to maintain, that we think is reflective of who we are as a company, and that's very important to us. That's, of those three things, people, planet, and profit, none, none of them takes priority over the others in our review. So, one of the things that we asked you to reconsider was the parkland fee dedication. The, I was quite surprised to find out that the park fees were gonna be $7,000 per unit. Now, that's an estimate right now, but to put that in perspective, that's $179,000. That's 25% of all of our development costs, and I can tell you that between that and the utility fees with, working with the, uh, water district and the sewer district, that it makes it very difficult to be a successful developer in the area. I understand from speaking to different people at the staff level, that the $7,000 fee is, it, you wouldn't have been calculated like that in the past, that in the past, we could have expected something closer to $1,500 per unit, not the $7,000 per unit. So, but more importantly than that, this $179,000 could be used on-site, and I understand from reading the code, that it says that if we want to use more than 50% of it on-site for improvements like underground detention, so that we can provide a nice land area, open space for the people, like our dog park or our community garden area, that you have the authority to say you can use more than, more than 50% of that on-site. So, the relief we're looking for can come in two forms. One, you could say, a more reasonable number for a parkland dedication would be $40,000 or $50,000 or something like that. Or you could say, you can use $150,000 of that $179,000 for improvements on-site for landscaping, underground detention, creating those park areas, those open spaces. Now, these are privately maintained spaces. There was no indication from the Parks Department that there was any need for additional parks in the area. There's a park directly north, very big, there's other parks in the area. The, there's a lot of really good reasons why we don't need more parkland there. The parkland that we're offering, the open space we're offering in our community is sufficient to serve our community, but more than that, it would be counterproductive for us to restrict that, the use of that area, just to people in the community. So, that's going to be, land that's going to be used by people in the neighborhood, in the neighboring, surrounding areas. To demonstrate that, when we were looking at this project at first, that flag pole section that they were talking about, we thought that that was a great opportunity for us to connect our project with the 38th Street corridor. We had a nice walking trail to find down there where people could come down and run into that district, that improvement district that you guys have been working on and approved recently. It would be great, inter, interconnectivity is an, an important part of urban design and development. We felt that we were meeting that. Now, the neighbors really, really wanted to maintain that as access, so we found a compromise, a good way to let everybody use that space, and, you know, it doesn't come at no cost to us. It comes at a cost to us. So, it would seem reasonable that some of that park money could be used to help pay for that, that connectivity. One last thing about that. The code specifically allows you to allocate the money from the parklands or to accept that land as a dedication for parklands, um, if it provides trails and interconnectivity. So, it seems like we've met the standards for you to give us some relief on this. The, the important thing I'd like to say about that is, we want to be good neighbors, and we're gonna be good neighbors. We designed what I think is one of the better projects in Colorado right now. We've got to compete with, uh, Aria and Midtown, and we're perfectly capable of doing that. You can help us by, by providing some support for us for the open space and the quality of, of the development that we're providing. So, that's really all I have to say about it. I hope you'll support us, and please consider giving us some relief on that.
Thank you.
Did you have any questions?
Well, we'll, we'll come back.
Okay.
Mr. Dahl, is that a possibility on, on the motion? If there's a motion for approval, that fees can be changed?
Well, I'm looking at the code section right now, and if you'd give me a minute or two with, with, uh, Meredith while maybe you're taking public testimony.
Okay.
I understand I'll need to have an answer for that, and I'm getting started on that.
All right, so now, we're gonna move on to, um, public comment for this item number two. Remember, you have, uh, up to three minutes per person. Please keep your comments germane to the subdivision plat that's being discussed tonight, and please address your comments to council. So, please step forward and spell your last name for here, item number two. You can line up if you want. Uh, I don't call people up by name, just go ahead and form a line along the, the wall, and you can, please spell your last name, and we go that way. It speeds it up, and it keeps everybody fresh. Go ahead. Uh, please spell your last name for the record and, uh, state your address.
Okay. Uh, my name is Sheldon Ronholdt, and the last name is spelled R-O-N-H-O-L-D-T. I live at 4075 Fenton Court. In the public forum on May 16th, 2013, the Planning Commission meeting, not one person that spoke had a positive view of Urban Green's development project. There were varied views of concern as to how Urban Green Development is gonna develop this property. Wouldn't it have been prudent for the Urban Green Development to hold a community meeting with the affected Wheat Ridge residents to explain their objectives? This didn't happen. From our point of view, it appears that Urban Green is only interested in getting their project pushed through, uh, the, the proper channels, and in most cases, not deal with the local citizens. This developer comes into our quiet neighborhood and changes our quality of life. Opening up Fenton Court and 39th Place to through traffic is a quality-of-life changer for us. Putting 26 housing units and 50 parking spaces on this small piece of property is a bad idea. Our quality of life will be reduced due to the amount of traffic flow through our streets. The amount of increased traffic flowing through our streets would amount to excess speeds on Fenton Court and 39th Place. We understand that change is inevitable, so the next step would be a compromise. The compromise, from our point of view, would be to put five or six upscale homes on this, um, on this development property. This arrangement, there would be little or no objections to the opening of Fenton Court and 39th Place. Let me repeat myself. There is no one on Fenton Court, or in 39th Place, or in the surrounding community that is for this over-populated housing development. is for this overpopulated housing development. When you vote tonight on this Urban Green Development Project, please consider Wheat Ridge residents' opinions, which have been stated here tonight, and to the City of Wheat Ridge, and to the Urban Green Development. Thank you.
Thank you. Please spell your last name for the record. You might want to pull the mic down a little bit. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ellen Goodnight. My husband and I live at 5825 West 39th Avenue. And we have been very happy Wheat Ridge residents there for 18 years. We have spent a significant amount of money and sweat equity in improving our home and our landscape. Our property is on the south side of the current development, or proposed development. The current design will, that I have seen lately, will have significant impact on our homes and the privacy in our backyard. Currently, there is proposed two-story duplexes facing our property. Additionally, three-story row houses at the end of the property, which will be towering over our homes. I would like to urge, strongly urge council, not to allow that the three-story row houses be put at the end, right next to single-story homes, but rather, the row houses should be placed in the middle of this development. I would also strongly urge council, as Mr. Young has brought up, that the monies that would be used for park improvements would go towards planting trees around this entire property where there are not trees. There are some trees that can be saved and pruned, but I would like to see, since Wheat Ridge is a tree city, let's bring this into this new community. And that these trees will be maintained and replaced if they do not thrive by the HOA. I would just like to say in conclusion, that we are not totally against this development. We knew it was coming someday, and we would welcome the new people that come into the community, and we do not want it to be created as an island in the center where all of us are around them. But we need council's help to integrate this new community and to not destroy our current community. And I appreciate your listening to me. Thank you.
My name is Brenda Hurley, H-U-R-L-E-Y. I'm at 4090 Fenton Court in Wheat Ridge, and we are at the top of the street on Fenton Court at 41st Avenue in Fenton Court, and we have been homeowners for 28 years there. My neighbors have pretty much covered most of what I wanted to say, although, what I'm curious from our applicant, if this kind of a project has been done before with this many units in 2.5 acres of land? Is there any data that you may have of how that all shook out with the way we're, you know, the planning is done? I'm curious about that. It is a very small area for all those residences. And again, the, the community meeting was not required. However, some of our neighbors were talked with. They, they were visited by...
Ms. Hurley, would you mind addressing the council, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. They were visited by the planning committee, or some people that were involved in this, selectively. I'm not sure if they picked the names out of the hat, I don't know. But as much as I respect my neighbors' opinions, I would have liked to have been approached as well and, and had a voice in this. And we are at the top of that street, and we have cars zooming around that corner all the time that have come very close to clipping our automobiles. And when they realize that they're on a dead-end street, then of course, they race out of there. That will be a cut-through. They'll cut through 39th to get, to miss the Harlan Light. They'll cut through Fenton Court to miss the Harlan Light. It's going to be a racetrack there. We want to get our cars off the street because we don't have parking, other than in front of our house on 41st Avenue, so, I mean, on Fenton Court. So, we have gone to the city to ask if we could build a garage on 41st, and we've been turned down because our current garage is not attached to our house. And so, we're putting 26 units in a 2.5-acre area, but I can't build a garage on my property to get my car off the street. The other thing is, and I apologize for our 39th people, that I don't know how many children are in that area, but we have nine children on our block right now with grandchildren, and that's an issue with these road races that are going to be happening there. I would also like to mention, too, during the remediation, when they were pulling out the dirt, there has been power lines that were pulled down, of course unexpectedly, by mistake. We had a third of a neighbor's tree taken out by the trucks, the construction trucks that came down there. That's just the beginning, folks. And I feel in my heart that if we had a council residence that lived in, a council person that lived in that area, that this may be looked at much differently. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Before we move on, do we have anybody else here for public comment? Because normally, we don't go back to public comment on item two. It'll be council's turn and discussion time with applicant and staff, so. Do we have anybody else here to speak on item number two before we move on? From the public? Okay. So, what we're going to do, we're going to take a five-minute recess because Mr. Dahl had to do some research. If a council member wants to look at options, and then also, we had a question for the applicant. If you could kind of address that when we come back. And we'll move on to, do the applicant want to make any comments about the question about other projects in the metro area that you've done of the similar size and scope? If you can answer that question from Ms. Hurley, and then we'll come back to the park fees. The question was, have you done any of these types of projects in the metro area of the similar size and design?
So, the largest project that we've done is 67 units on six acres. That was the most dense project. The, well, we, we have eight units on 13,000 square feet. So, I think that's a similar density. That's on Navajo in the Highlands. We have, you know, other things as dense, but not on, but not to the point of 26 on 2.5 acres. I would like to add that we didn't ask for any variance to the zoning as far as density goes. It's a by right use for that density, and...
Thank you. Okay, so now we'll move on. Thank you, then we'll come back if there's any questions. So, council discussion questions? Mr. Dahl, do you have any comments?
Sure. The code section that applies here is 26421, which is the section on dedications generally, and it's got subsections on parkland dedication, both the land and if not available, and that's not the case here, pardon me, if the land isn't available for dedication, that's not the case here, then it switches to a cash-in-loo process. There's probably two questions to be addressed here. One is the amount of the dedication. And while I hear and understand the, the calculation based on, on assessed value, that's not our code approach. Our code approach is appraised value, which is, as we all can anticipate, a much higher number. That's appraised value after development, which is a much higher number than assessed value of vacant land. And I get it that that may well have been used in the past, but it isn't what the code says. So, to begin with on the number, you go with appraised value. Having said that bad news, the good news on, on, on the number, at least from the developer's standpoint, is that the code also has kind of an overriding reasonableness standard, and you're in charge of making that decision ultimately. So, while I've said that the calculation needs to be based on appraised figures, which resulted in that number, I forget...
$7,000.
Right. Your, and, and that's where you start. And you don't start with some basis of appraised value. Start with, you start with, excuse me, you don't start with the, the assessor's value, but instead, appraised. That's where you start, but there's a reasonable standard that allows you, and if it were Planning Commission, the final stop be them, to determine whether, in the context of this development, that number is reasonable, or another number is reasonable. So, you have the right to set the number at a different level. That's kind of the first part of the, the equation. Secondly is, well, who spent, whatever number you end up with, who spends it and what do you spend it for? The code is a little less permissive there in the context of land dedic, or excuse me, of fees and loo. It allows you to move things around more for, for actual land that's going to be dedicated. However, the policy has been, and, and the policy that's actually been used with land dedications in the past to the city, has been to allow flexibility with where that money is spent. I know I'm taking kind of a long time to tell you yes, but you need to have the background for that. I think we may well bring forward a code amendment sometime to, to expressly say in the code, same kind of flexibility on spending the money that we have, and flexibility on using land dedications and moving them around. And you may well see that, and we'll probably bring a code amendment forward. But, but given that, you have the ability to reduce, or to, to, to reduce from the appraised value calculation that you, was mentioned, the number. You'd have to, I think it'd be helpful for you to make a little record of, you know, why you believe a different number is correct in this context. I'm sure the developer would be pleased to help you establish that. And also, what the, the funds are, what the funds are used for, either specific things the developer will be required to build that are recreational amenities, and what things that, that, to the extent money would be given to the city, what fraction of this number you end up with is going to be given to the city to build recreational facilities, which don't have to be right here. As you know, just like parkland dedication, they can be elsewhere, under the theory that it generally serves the city. So, yes, you can reduce the number if that's your choice, and you can, you can specify as conditions of approval where the, the money in that reduced number, or whatever number you end up with, gets spent, whether it's spent in part by the developer and the rest given to the city, and the city spends it in whole by the developer, or in whole by the city. So, those are the choices you've got.
Mr. Pond? Just to clarify, that would be inside of this action, that would be a condition to the motion?
Yes, it'd be a condition on the, be an additional condition that the parkland dedication, or parkland, fee and loo dedication be set at blank dollars, and that of those blank dollars, you know, X percent be spent by the developer for the following things, 1-3, and Y percent, you know, the remainder be spent by the city, or be dedicated to the city, and then I don't think you have to further require.
Anything else, Mr. Pond? Ms. Davis?
So, a question as far as the appropriation of the fees, as you were just discussing, do we have to come up with specifics tonight? I mean, I think, to me, in my opinion, that would require a little bit of conversation and discussion. I don't know that off the top of my head I could say X amount, and 50% is going to go here, and, because I do think, you know, some of the residents had good comments about getting some more mature trees to perhaps surround the, the, some, some of the homes that might have a, you know, that they might, that might be right in their neighborhood or their backyard, or the feeling of that to, to kind of cushion that. And I think it's going to be difficult to have those, have that vision tonight as far as what would be the best appropriation and division of that appropriation. So, is that something in a motion, which I'll, I'll have to make, that we could say, could be discussed at a later time?
Well, a couple of things on that. If, if it's to be discussed and decided by the council later time, then you're into just a continuance, you know, for action. I'm not certain the public hearing's been closed. I think it has or not. It hasn't. You could continue the public hearing, you know, to a date certain, given, you know, direction to staff to work with the developer to bring forward, you know, a package along these lines for you to review. That's certainly an option for you. The only way, I think, for you to sort of get where you're headed tonight, and I'm not suggesting you must, but part of my job is to give you choices, would be, you know, if you were to do an approval, and that presupposes an approval, but if you had an approval motion, you could potentially do something like the, the amount of the fee dedication reduced by X percent, or reduced to a certain number. If you can get there, then you can probably say that to be spent, you know, 50% by the developer, 50% by the city, the developer's 50% to be...
Landscaping.
To be spent for landscaping and other items that are approved by the, by the planning, planning department, public works department. But again, that presupposes you're okay with figuring out what the number is, overall number, and what the division of that number is. I should lastly tell you that I heard the comment on landscaping on the trees. Those don't really count as recreational amenities by themselves. You often see trees in parks, and that's great. If you dedicate parkland, you're going to be, put trees in there, then you bet that is a legitimate expense for trees for parkland. But trees for, merely for buffering, don't really carry with them a recreational component. And what that amounts to is kind of diverting recreational funds to a landscape buffering of function, which, you know, the developer may well want to do, but I'm, I'm thinking that this pot of money isn't appropriate one to use for that purpose.
Thanks. Mr. Starker? Well, Ms. Davis, would you done?
Yeah, for now, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I have some questions from this record. What is the surface treatment on the pole planning to be?
The current design on the pole is a ten-foot wide path to be constructed of crusher fines to be able to support the weight of vehicles with three feet of natural landscaping on each side. As we get down to Thirty-Eighth Avenue, there are more substantial improvements that we're going to require, and that includes fifty feet in being hard-surface concrete or asphalt, just, again, to support the weight of trucks and to get the ability for people to be able to pull off Thirty-Eighth Avenue. There's also going to be some sort of gate mechanism, which would allow the folks who have vehicular access to either unlock it or punch in the key code.
So, this is not available to the general public?
It is available to the general public for pedestrian purposes only. Vehicular access would be only allowed for those folks who have agreed, and that back up to the property and want to participate in that.
Okay, so you can, you can walk down there, but you can't necessarily drive down?
Correct.
When, and I was looking at, and it may be an older site plan, but I assume that it hasn't changed considerably. It was attachment number four in our packet. The, if the roadway is connected between Thirty-Ninth and, Thirty-Ninth and Fenton, so the street connects there, and it doesn't look like that we have any, any public parking. When, when members of the public, you know, from, that don't live there and don't walk there, drive their automobiles there to visit residents in this, in this development, where will they park?
Each of the units has two covered parking spots, and there's also fifteen visitor parking spaces for those times when there will be that need.
Okay, so that's, that's part of the, that's part of the circulation, I guess, an obvious circulation, or a parking lot that, when someone drives in, they would, they would understand where to park? Okay. There was a question about the three-story townhouse, I believe, sort of a budding up to the, or getting close to the, to the, to the property line and adjacent residents. Is there, is there a bulk plane concern, or do we have a bulk plane that comes into play there?
The city really doesn't have a bulk plane requirement. We have our typical setbacks that are required based on height of the structure, and the R-three, it's based on a two- or three-story building, I believe. The three-story rowhouses are going to be at the kind of south, southwest corner, and they're going to have a fifteen-foot setback.
And what do you, what do you imagine the roof line to be at that location?
They will be shed roofs, so a pretty tall structure. We do measure the allowable roof height to the average between the peak and the ridge line on that type of roof.
And we have a thirty-five-foot height limitation on that?
Correct.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
Just offer one, one comment. I appreciate the council questions and concerns about the character of the development. I would just caution that the jurisdiction tonight for council is specific to the subdivision plot, and I appreciate there's an awkwardness there, but the issues of architectural design, of site planning, of setbacks have been through the review process, through the plant building group, which in this case is the jurisdiction of the planning commission. So, I just want to caution that we want to make sure that we kind of limit the scope of our review this evening to the contents of the subdivision plot.
Mr. Johnson, would that be, would it be an oversimplification to say that we're really looking at the road right-of-way and the parks dedication fee as the core, our core jurisdiction here?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council? Mr. Stites?
Yeah, just as a matter of history, I was born and raised maybe in Mrs. Hurley's house at forty-ninety-five Fenton Court. Yeah. And growing up there, we were the first owners, and it was a great neighborhood. But in any of the get-togethers that we always had with the neighbors and this and that, it was widely known that someday Fenton Court was going to be cut through, and knowing the people on Thirty-Ninth, it was widely known back then that someday Thirty-Ninth would probably be cut through. So, I don't think it's any news that maybe, you know, this could happen, but just as a history part, we always knew that someday it would be cut through, because I used to play at the greenhouse and go up and down the pole. And, but I do think that the applicant has made an effort with the neighbors to work things out. Meredith, how many, because I didn't see the, how many trees do you think this will be planted in there? Not any extra ones, you know, my...
Well, they actually have exceeded, you know, there's, there's certain numbers that we apply. The first one of those is the number of street trees based on the classification of the street, and they meet those. And then there's an additional tree and shrub count for every additional thousand square feet of required landscaping, and they exceed that. Now, if you, if you just hold on a second, I can turn into the planning commission report where I've got it a little bit more handy. They do exceed, I know there was talk at planning commission about the buffering, especially with the situation with some of those larger building faces facing the neighbors. So, let's just take a look here, landscaping. Okay, so, I talked about street trees. Additional trees on the site would be twenty-eight and two-hundred-and-eighty shrubs. The applicant's proposing to plant thirty-four additional trees and seven-hundred-and-twenty-eight shrubs. They also exceed the minimum thirty percent landscape coverage by quite a bit with forty-two percent landscape coverage.
And I will have to say that it was somewhat quite delightful to grow up down there, because every now and then, where we live there, right on the corner, our cars would get hit, and usually it was by someone that had been drinking. One night they had, we're chasing a bank robber, and he hit the folks' car. So, it was kind of neat, you know, living there, but this is me.
Ms. Jay?
This is, this is kind of a tough decision. I'm totally aware that the city needs development of this type, utilizing the little pockets of land that we have, and I like the fact that this developer is very environmentally friendly and has exceeded the requirements for landscaping and regarding the, and I hope that continues. Regarding the, the park dedication amount, I did a kind of a funny calculation as to thinking that maybe because there is so much extra landscaping going on and planning with a little small dog area and garden and stuff like that, I thought, well, maybe we should think about that. We have underground pond, which, which adds to our park-like atmosphere, we'll call it that. And the, the kind of a strange calculation I did was, I looked at the Parks Department budget for the year, which is four million, three-hundred thousand dollars, and divided that up by the amount of people we have in the city, and came up with a strange cost of a hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars per person, per year. And then I figured that that, for ten years, that would be thirteen-eighty per person. This is kind of strange where they came out. And I kind of ran that out for ten years, and what I came with is that if we went fifty-fifty on the, on the, the park dedication fee, we would have close to ninety thousand, which we could use for other uses, and since they've done so much, and that sort of was about the same amount of money that it takes to run our parks and recreation area for ten years with, with our current residents, and which is really be more like twenty years, because they're kicking in as well. So, that would be the suggestion that I would have, that, and in, in response to that as well, that if we were generous and did that, that the builder would be, I would hope, prone to add some more trees as, as needed to help some of those properties that, that might appreciate the buffering.
Any other questions or comments before I close the public hearing? I would suggest if we're going to have an amendment, maybe, that we make a main motion for approval or denial, and then make an amendment as a separate piece, so it would be a little bit cleaner, if we do that.
I just have one final comment. I will say, I appreciate the builder and what they're doing as far as retention pond and putting it underground, and I do recognize that that's very expensive to do. I will say, being on the urban renewal authority, we're dealing with a retention pond issue right now that's like a hot potato of who wants to own it and who wants to do it. So, I do appreciate that you guys are, are handling that in a respectful way to the community, and even though the expense is greater to have it underground, that you are doing that underground. So, I do want to say I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Pond? Just, just a point of clarification, just to make sure I understand your, your request. We will amend it with an additional condition, but, but essentially introduce the motion with the, with the conditions at hand, and then, once that's seconded, then we can consider an additional...
Amendment.
An additional amendment to the, to the conditions.
Right, if there's a motion for approval.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So, any more questions or comments before I close the public hearing? I'm going to close the public hearing, and a motion is in order.
I'm going to approve renovation number twenty-three dash twenty thirteen. A resolution approving a two-lot subdivision plot with a right-of-way dedication for property zone residential three, R-three, and neighborhood commercial located at fifty-eight oh-one West Thirty-Eighth Avenue and four thousand Fenton Court for the following reasons. City council has conducted a proper public hearing meeting. All public views requirements as required by section twenty-six dash one oh-nine and twenty-six dash four oh-seven of the Code of Laws. The requested subdivision has been reviewed by the planning commission, which has forwarded its recommendations, and the subdivision plot has been found in compliance with Article Four of Chapter Twenty-six of the Code of Laws.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve as stated in the packet. It was seconded by Mr. Reinhardt. Now amendments?
I would like to add an amendment.
Okay. Ms. Davis?
I would like to add the amendment of the reduction of fees in lieu of land dedication for parkland needs of fifty percent, not to exceed eighty-nine thousand five hundred dollars, with one hundred percent used by the city.
So, you're making a recommendation to eighty-nine thousand five hundred with all dollar amounts being used by the city of Wheat Ridge?
Yes, and I guess one of my, my questions, and I don't know if this is in order right now, but...
Let's get a second first.
Okay.
Is there a second for that amendment?
Second.
Can we have a second? Go for it, Ms. Davis.
I guess one of my questions with this, again, kind of goes back to, I, you know, as far as allocation, I would like to allocate more for the developer to enhance the landscaping, but it kind of sounds, Mr. Dahl, as if that's not really considered parkland development. So, not allowed.
That's, that's correct.
Okay.
Okay, so we have an amendment to reduce the park fees from whatever they were, down to eighty-nine thousand five hundred, or reduce them by fifty percent, with the entire amount going to the city of Wheat Ridge for park, parkland dedication, parkland. Discussion on that amendment? Please poll the council on the amendment.
Mayor, could I ask a clarification?
Okay, we have the main motion as amended. Please poll the council on the main motion as amended.
Mayor, could I ask a clarification before you pass on the, on the amendment? The way I read Ms. Davis's condition, or the way I heard it, was that it was based on a fifty percent reduction, but the fee shall not exceed eighty-nine five hundred. So, we'll proceed with getting an appraisal that would determine the fee, to the extent that the appraisal would set the fee lower than a hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars, then the fee might be lower than eighty-nine five...
Fifty percent is your...
Okay, so we'll, we'll proceed forward with the normal appraisal process. Thank you.
And all the funds would be retained by the city of Wheat Ridge.
Thank you.
Please poll the council on the main motion as amended.
And that carries eight to zero.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Let's take a five-minute break, and we'll start on item number three. And we're going to start our next agenda item. The next item on the agenda is item three, which is resolution twenty-two dash twenty thirteen. I'm going to open the public hearing, Mr. Pond.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number twenty-two dash two thousand thirteen, a resolution approving a... Resolution number 22-2013, a resolution approving a 48-lot subdivision plat with right-of-way dedications for property zone planned residential development located at 11885 West 38th Avenue, case number WS-13-01 Dowd Overlook. The applicant is requesting approval of a 48-lot subdivision plat with right-of-way dedications for property zone planned residential development located at 11885 West 38th Avenue. The purpose of the subdivision is to prepare the property for the development of a new residential subdivision.
Thank you. I need to swear everybody in who's going to speak on this agenda, so please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth in this matter? Thank you. Move on to our staff presentation. Please state your name and your position with the city.
Good evening. For the record, Meredith Reckert, Wheat Ridge Community Development Department. And again, I've got, we've got Ken Johnstone, Director of Community Development, at the staff table. In addition, Gerald Doll, City Attorney, and Tim Pronto, Director of Public Works. Case number WS-13-01 is a request for approval of a subdivision plat for property zone PRD at 11885 West 38th Avenue. The property is within the city and all proper posting notification requirements have been met, therefore there is jurisdiction here this case. I'd also like to enter into the record the case file and packet materials, zoning ordinance and the contents of this digital presentation.
Accepted.
This is a major subdivision, which anything over five lots in the city of Wheat Ridge is considered a major subdivision, so it does require city council approval with the planning commission recommendation, city council's final authority. And again, a neighborhood meeting is not required prior to the submission of an application for a subdivision. So here we are looking at an image of the site. You can see 38th Avenue runs along the south. The property is outlined in turquoise. There is an existing single-family residence on the property with associated outbuildings and grazing land. The existing home was built in 1946 and it will be demolished as part of the site improvements. Again, we've got 38th Avenue on the south in the Clear Creek Green Belt, open space to the north. The site is about 15 acres in size. There is an existing sanitary sewer line with a 30-foot easement which traverses the northern portion of the property. And again, I would point out that property ownership stops right behind the house at the top of the Clear Creek Green Belt bluff. The slot property was conveyed to Coors in the late '60s and in 2000 became officially part of the Wheat Ridge Clear Creek Open Space area. So this is also a 2012 aerial with the zoning overlay on it. The site is designated in sort of a dark green color, designate is zone PRD. It's surrounded on three sides by single-family residential neighborhoods. To the west, we've got R1 designated by this yellow area in here with A2 on the northern portion, and on the south and east, sort of the lighter ochre greenish color designates R1A zoning. Again, the property directly to the north of the site is part of the Clear Creek Green Belt area, and I would note that the southern portion of the Green Belt adjacent to the subject property is designated as conservation area on the city's open space management plan. The Riston ditch is also located in the open space area to the northeast of the subject site, sort of in this area right in here. In the prior picture, you saw the aerial that there are several reservoirs located within the Clear Creek Open Space corridor. Most of those were once gravel pits and are now used by Coors as water storage. Bass Lake, which is the closest to this particular property, is part of the conservation area and does feature a recently completed watchable wildlife boardwalk on the southern side of the lake and an endangered species, the yutes, lady tress's orchid, has been identified growing in this general area. Just to go briefly over some history, the property was rezoned from A2 and R1 to planned residential development with an outline and development plan approved in 2007. The ODP set the allowed uses and development standards for the property. It also showed a conceptual layout of the property, typical architectural elevations and landscape plans. In April of this year, city council approved a plat showing 53 lots on the property. It had a similar street configuration and layout consistent with those established on the ODP, and if this case is approved tonight, it will supersede the April approval with this new plat document. So, looking at some slides, looking north on 38th Avenue towards the existing drive into the property, you can see the existing structures and improvements on the north end of the site. Here we are looking from 38th Avenue to the northwest at adjacent development. This time we're looking to the northeast towards McLaughlin Applewood Estates, close up of the house and other buildings. This is the area of the detention pond at the very northeast corner of the site. Looking into the Green Belt towards the north, a lot of these trees will be removed as part of the development. Many of them are in bad shape or dead or dying. And then looking northwest, the body of water that you see over in this area is Bass Lake, which is part of our open space system. And looking back towards 38th Avenue, south along the driveway. So the proposed plat has got four sheets. Sheet one, again, is the declaration page, which contains the legal description, signature blocks for recording and various notes. Among other things, the city's standard language regarding easements and detention pond maintenance are included. There are also notes pertaining to tracks A through E, which are common elements in the subdivision and will be maintained by the homeowners' associations. Those include tracks A and E, which are for landscaping. Track B accommodates the detention pond. C is the sanitary sewer line from the west, and track D encompasses the emergency access from 38th Avenue. And these are all shown on the second page of the plat, which is the actual kind of meat and potatoes, again, of the plat. It does show the layout, and this particular sheet, the number of lots has been reduced from 53 to 48, although it still looks similar in that it's got the kind of the loop road that comes off 38th Avenue aligning with Tabor Court to the south. The prior design showed the three little cul-de-sac eyebrows that came off the main road over here. Those have been eliminated, which has also solved some of the issues staff had with some irregular driveway configurations on the old design and did shift the street a little bit to the west. And these lots have been somewhat reduced in size. Elimination of those eyebrow areas provides better buildable lots and regular shapes and accesses. The northern portion of the street, which is 39th Place, has been shifted south to increase the depths along that northern row of lots. And again, to help the developability, those depths have been increased from about 15 feet to 40 feet. The interior of the subdivision in this area, the prior plat showed the lots as being skewed towards the street instead of perpendicular. And again, complicated development of those sites with the applicant's product. The number of interior lots has been reduced from 19 down to 17, but the lot sizes have been increased from about 6,900 square feet to about 10,000, and most of the lots along the eastern side have increased a little bit. Sheet three, which is what we're looking at now in the image, is intended to represent the buildable envelopes for the proposed subdivision, also as the addressing plan. And we will need to come up with an addressing scheme before we record if this actual plat is approved. Again, there's really no modification to the street system adjacent to or on the subdivision. 38th Avenue is still designated an arterial and will have 82 feet of right-of-way. Improvements include vertical curb and gutter and XL diesel lane on the north side with bike lanes and a six-foot separated sidewalk and landscaped tree lawn. The interior improvements, again, are somewhat, are pretty much the same. Those were designated at the time of ODP, and that includes a landscape median island at the center or at the entrance of the subdivision with 50 feet of right-of-way on the interior street, mountable curb and a four-foot wide sidewalk on one side. Tree lawns will be provided on both sides of the street. This fourth sheet, we usually don't see this, but because there were so many easements that needed to be vacated on the prior plat, including the right-of-way, which will be rededicated, we included a vacation sheet, just to make it a little bit cleaner. I would point out that there's no major changes to the drainage design. All of the overland flows and storm sewer flows do end up in this detention pond at the northeast corner, which is then conveyed down to the Clear Creek Green Belt open space through a pipe bore into the slope. Let's see. Temporary construction easement is being required to facilitate development in the Green Belt portion through Jefferson County Open Space, and staff continues to work with Jefferson County to obtain those finalized easements. Okay, I think this shows a little bit better the differences between the old and the new. The approved plat that was approved by council in August is the one over on the left-hand side. The one we're looking at tonight is over on the right-hand side. And again, the street system has been modified to, number one, shift 39th Place to the south to shift this street, I believe it's not Tabor Court, Taft Court, over to the west, which eliminates some of the lots, but also increases the lots in size. The interior of the site, again, you can see how the existing or the old plat, they're skewed to the street system, which again complicates the developability of those lots. With the new plat, those are shown as perpendicular, and some of the east side lots have increased in size. So you can see kind of the existing and proposed and how those changes occurred. Agency referrals, all of the responding agencies can provide service to the subdivision with improvements. And a particular note, the Army Corps of Engineers has approved a 404 permit. They've also determined that there should be no impact on the orchid or its habitat with the construction. Westridge Sanitation and the developer have executed an annexation agreement, which details the responsibilities of both the district and the developer. And let's see, Public Works has reviewed a final storm drainage report and plat. And again, the traffic can be supported based on the improvements required. And finally, the Parks Commission reviewed this at their meeting held on June 9th and is recommending fees in lieu of land dedication to be paid in full prior to the issuance of the first building permit. Planning Commission reviewed this at a public hearing held on June 20th. They did give a recommendation of approval for the following reasons. The plat is consistent with the design concept of the zone change in ODP. The right-of-way relocation creates a more logical development pattern. They've met the requirements of Article Four of the Zoning and Development Code, and all utility districts can serve with improvements. There were four conditions they included on there, and a couple of those still need to be executed, but I believe all the typos have been corrected. And finally, in closing, staff concludes that the proposed plat is consistent with the design concepts set on the Dowd Overlook ODP document. We feel that the relocation of the right-of-way and reduction of the number of lots creates a more logical development pattern. All requirements of the Article Four of the Zoning and Development Code have been met, and we are giving a recommendation of approval. There was one condition included, I believe, in the council motion, and that should be included on a motion to approve. That concludes the staff report.
Is that something else, or is that... There you go.
Pardon me? Oh.
There you go, okay. Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the applicant. Please step forward and spell your last name for the record and state your city or address.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. My name is Rip Reed, R-E-I-D, 7800 East Dorado Place, Greenwood Village, 80111. I work for Standard Pacific Homes. Standard Pacific was acquired, actually acquired the Ryder Corporation, a builder that started in Denver in 1965. I've been with the two companies combined for 36 years, and our goal has always been to focus on community building whenever possible. So we see this as a great opportunity to go into an infill site and create a nice community. We are under contract to buy the property from the developer, or actually the developer who processed the original plat. We saw deficiencies in working with staff in the original plan. To the north, we had very shallow lots that are literally putting a house on top of a very steep embankment that goes into Clear Creek Green Belt. The center lots, as Meredith said, were a Z lot formation. They did not allow really much of a house because in addition to the typical setbacks in the community, there's also a roof coverage requirement. So we cannot exceed a certain percent of roof, whether that's front porch, patio, garage, et cetera. So the 6,900-foot lot that was typical in the middle of the site really restricted the size of house, and in many cases, we couldn't get a ranch plant on and needed to go to a smaller product. By making the changes that we're making, we're creating a condition that our product line, which we anticipate to be from 2,400 square feet, ranches up to over 3,500 square feet, two stories, we kind of anticipate putting two ranch plans in, one main floor master, and then three two-story plans, letting the buyers choose which plan they want on each lot, but being cognizant of repetition and making sure that streetscape is maintained in the proper way. But with this new layout, we'll be able to get all six of these homes on every lot. So we feel that we have a consistent product and a consistent plan that will actually raise the value of the neighborhood and the surrounding neighborhoods. You know, we certainly don't have prices yet. We're working through development costs. We're finalizing that, getting ready to pull the trigger on it. We anticipate this to be a higher price point community, and we feel that with the, you know, with the changes that we're requesting, we will be able to achieve that. As far as the ODP goes, we really haven't asked for any changes other than a clarification on the fence on the north side. There was, the way that the ODP was written, the six-foot vinyl fence was required to go on the north side as well as around the rest of the community or on the east and west side, and we just asked to take that down to a split rail fence, which we're told can be done administratively. Other than that, we're making no changes on the ODP. Russ Burrows is also here with me tonight, the civil engineer who has worked on this, both with the 53-lot plat as well as this 48-lot plat.
Thank you. So we'll move on to public comment. I'd like to remind everybody we have a time limit of three minutes, so please step forward and please keep your comments germane to the subject of the subdivision. Please spell your last name for the record and feel free to line up against the wall. You're not getting shot, are you?
Ava Nagy, N-A-G-Y, live at 3834 Union Court, Prospect Ridge. First, I want you to know that my husband and I are not opposed to development. We have made our careers in the construction business. I guess you are looking at the lots. At the east side of this subdivision, adjacent to McLaughlin Applewood, you can see that the width of the proposed lots are roughly equivalent. However, on the west side, it's an entirely different story. Lots eight to 14 of Block One appear to be roughly two-thirds of the width of the Prospect Ridge lots. If those lots, eight to 14, were reduced by two, it appears then that the west side would be similar to the east side border lots. If this is too punitive, then at least eliminate one lot and increase the rear setbacks to 30 to 35 feet. Eliminating two lots would give a real premium feel to the whole project for the buyers and the builder. If this project is so financially tenuous, then two less lots would mean it's failure, then the city should seriously consider... then the city should seriously consider rejecting the project on that basis. I just want to take a moment and read the lot sizes on the west side, 8 through 14. It goes from 9133, 9390, 9390, 9390, 9390, and the last two also 9390. And on the east side, from Lot 25 to 31, it's 11,131, 12,488, 11,0096, 11,097, 12,427, 10,929, 14,984. There's quite a bit of difference. The west side does not match or mirror our homes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ken Asbury, A-S-B-U-R-Y. I reside at 3882 Union Court, which my home borders the west side of the proposed development. And I also would like to say that I'm not opposed to the development. I have taken the time to go to Standard Pacific's developments, looked at the product they're building, and I feel confident that we will end up with a nice development next to us. So I'm happy they are the developer, because it appears they do a very good job. I am, in concurrence with my neighbor, that previously, when it was 52 lots, we had nine homes on our boundary. Now we have 14. I would also implore the council to consider reducing the lots on our side by at least one unit and spreading that 9,000 square feet over those small 9,000-square-foot lots to enhance our boundary on the west side and make it more equal to what we see on the east side. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Marilyn Fisher, F-I-S-H-E-R, at 3850 Union Court, and I want to just say that my two neighbors, I agree with what they're saying, and we want to just mirror the east side as the west, and at this point, just do one lot less and spread that out, and I think everybody will be happy. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? Please step forward, spell your last name, Mr. Fisher.
Steve Fisher, F-I-S-H-E-R, in 3850 Union Court. I live on the west side. The same thing everybody else said. The original plan, the original approved one, had 11 houses on the west side, 11 lots. The proposed one has nine, or excuse, the other way around, excuse me, nine now up to 11, right? And, okay, well, it's a higher density on the west side. And our homes on that west side, on Union Court, are larger homes than are on McLaughlin's. So we're just trying to mirror the homes that we have, match up, and match up somewhat close to what the prior plan was. You know, we're not against the development. We just want to match up the lot sizes closer to what we have and closer to what is next to the McLaughlin subdivision. So that's our only objection. So, yeah, if we could reduce one lot, I know that, you know, they're concerned about their development costs, and they want to get as many lots in there as they can, but we would be happy reducing one lot on that west side. Thank you.
Thank you. So anybody else for public comment before we move on to council questions? I guess what we can do is, either Meredith or the applicant, would you want to address some of the comments made by the public about the lots? Is that a possibility? Or Meredith or the developer? Okay. This isn't to put you on the spot, it's just that, you know, if you want to address their comments, so the council knows what you can and cannot do.
Thank you again, Rip Reed, R-E-I-D. The Standard Pacific Homes, we, again, we stayed within the ODP. The setbacks that were established, there were standard setbacks for the east side that varied from those on the west side. The lots on the east side, we saw no reason to change those much. We altered very slightly the detention pond and the sewer easement that runs along the north side of the community on the south side of the detention pond. The biggest thing we did, looking at the two plats side by side, is we dropped that road, the, I can't read it, but the east-west road at the north side of the product down, we squared that off to, again, make the lots on the north side deeper. Had some minor adjustments to the lots on the east side for that reason. The original plan had those three little, not cul-de-sacs, but little bumpouts in the road, which created a very difficult driveway orientation. When we did house layouts on the plan, what we found was that the homes were, in some cases, facing north and south, so they were not part of the community. To minimize, you know, quite honestly, partly the financial impact of the change, we worked on the plan, worked with staff, and came up with a plan that lost five lots. We felt that we could get more for the homes, because we can build a larger home with that, but, you know, to continue to drop lots is going to have, you know, an impact on the cost.
Thank you.
I don't know that that truly answers the question.
No, I just, thank you. So we'll move on to council discussion and questions.
Just one for Meredith. Seems to me I saw this on Planning Commission five years ago, and that at that time it was 53 lots. Does that sound right?
That's correct.
And at that time, you did an analysis of the density on this site vis-à-vis the adjoining properties?
Yes.
And at that time, it was determined that at 53 units, this was in comparable density to the adjoining subdivisions?
Generally.
And so we now have four, five less lots than we did five years ago, and we still think that we're probably, I think that was the point. Thank you.
If you look at the overall plat design, yes.
All right. And generally speaking, the value of the homes, Mr. Reed, the value of the homes is the, I'm going to pass, I'll pass that question on. Thanks. Never mind.
Thank you. Mr. Pond?
Just a question for the applicant. If I heard you correctly, you indicated that in the proposed plat, you have, I think maybe you mentioned five or six products, somewhat split between 2,400-square-foot ranches and approximately 3,500 single-family two-story residents. And I, my question would be, if that in fact is your product offering, an adjustment of the lot size, you know, as discussed, would or wouldn't change your product offering?
Certainly wouldn't change the product.
So in other words, the same plans, the same houses would be available regardless?
No, I mean, the bigger lots get, you know, the plans, the plan sizes will still fit on the lots. They will fit on all the lots at the 48-lot plat.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Stites?
I've got to ask this, Meredith, because I got a letter on it. When that water goes back to that holding pond and then goes down, will at any time that go into a ditch, or is that going to go into the lake down there?
I guess I'd like Mr. Burrows to come up and address that.
Please spell your last name for the record.
My name is Russ Burrows, B-U-R-R-O-W-S. I'm a consulting civil engineer. Our address is 7442 South Tucson Way, 3190 Centennial, Colorado. The detention is set up such that it's a water quality and a water quantity pond, so we're treating water quality in the first portion of it, first stage of it, and it's all released through screen structures and outlet structures that control the release. Goes into a pipe system that drops through the slope of the embankment and comes out into an impact stilling basin, and we've exited into the existing, there's a small wet pond at the bottom, about an acre in size, and the idea was is to allow that water to further treat in that wetland pond. And then the city staff, the Army Corps of Engineers, we've all discussed how we want to handle that from there. And we've, the original pond had two breaches to it. There was two cuts in the existing embankment. We're closing one of those breaches and putting a five-year release and water quality release, where it's naturally going through one of the breaches to allow that water to flow out as it naturally does. And then during the 100-year event, we've created an overflow weir that will allow it to spread out more and over top near the northwest corner of the pond. So in essence, we're creating, the release rates are mirrored to the design storm and the 100-year storm and the minor storm of five-year. And so I think we've effectively handled the storm water. And also, we've worked with staff. The city requested that we upsize the storm sewer system through our main street coming in to allow for some future drainage improvements along 38th Avenue. And so part of that is, is we're routing that water through treating water quality in our pond, on the onsite pond, and allowing that to still attenuate peak flows for off-site flows as well. So it's a benefit to the town from a storm water perspective, management's perspective, because it's really a last hurrah for the town to, or the city, to get a point of access through a property to work with drainage improvements along West 38th Avenue. So staff was diligent in accomplishing that goal for the city.
Okay, thank you, yeah, because I just, I don't know if George got the same letter or not, but I got a letter just on how that was going to be treated back there, so that's satisfactory, so thank you. Okay.
Ms. Jay?
I have a question for Mr. Reed. Pardon the, what seems like an obvious question. Since, actually, it's a two-part question. By removing one lot from the west side, you would have larger lots. All the houses fit on all the lots, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So therefore, there'd be an inclination to build larger homes in those lots if they were, if there was one less and they were larger lots. I noticed that in the photographs, there were some really nice, large homes directly west, and I can understand why there would be some desire to have that similar. So the obvious question is, have you thought about, and I'm sure you have, but just for my own reasons, reducing, or excuse me, adding one lot to the east side and reducing so much on the west side?
Well, I think the east side is set. So if we're dealing with the west side, you know, to answer your, or to respond to your first comment about larger lot, build larger homes, the reality is that we'll sell to the market, and what we're seeing is a trend towards ranch-style plans, and we think that's partly aging baby boomers. However, it's interesting, because we're seeing young families who are more interested in ranch-style plans as well. I think the fact that so many people are finishing basements, including our company, you know, a ranch-style plan still creates an opportunity for increased space, living space, in the basement, and so families are buying ranch-style plans. So to make the assumption that a bigger lot will automatically get a larger house isn't necessarily a fact. Our trend is, certainly in the last couple of years, that we're seeing more ranch plans being sold. As far as losing another lot, we have done analysis, and we worked on several plans with our land planners. We worked with staff on some of these different plans. We kind of narrowed in on it. We worked with some of their concerns. Traffic had issues with those little bubbles, and, you know, quite honestly, we did as well. One of the big things that we had an issue with was the orientation of the homes to the community. We just didn't feel they were going to be part of the community.
I agree.
So in that exercise, you know, we had fewer lots and we had more lots, but we structured our deal based on the 48 lots, and consequently, we have also performed all the engineering and taken it to the point that, you know, with plat approval, we'll actually start development right away, so we'll be ready to go.
One other question. You have got a, the fence is vinyl with monument-type in between.
Right, brick columns.
Exactly. Could you buff that fence up a little bit more? Maybe make it all monuments-type, all masonry?
I don't think so. I, as I understand it, the neighbors to the west were the driving force, and I could be wrong, but the driving force for that vinyl fence. And again, when we decided to make changes, we were very conscious not to change anything on the ODP. And the ODP is where it's mandated that we put the vinyl fence in. Now, along 38th, there will be a masonry fence.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Demont?
What's the width of the lots, on the, average width of the lots on that west side?
They were 9,000 square feet, more or less, 9,300?
I'm wondering width on.
Mr. Burrows will have the actual dimensions.
Mr. Burrows, can you talk a little louder in the mic, please? Maybe bring the mic up a little bit.
Okay, we'll do. How's that?
That's good. Thank you.
Generally, the narrowest width is 71 feet by 132.25 feet. So generally, it's, and those are the ones that were stated earlier that were 93, 80 square feet.
So if you eliminated one and divide that by 10 lots, you're seven feet. You're adding seven feet.
Yeah, if you were to do that plan, you'd probably be working on one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven lots, so you would be adding 10 foot to the lot, or seven lots. There's 11 lots along that front. Someone had mentioned that there was 14. There's 11, 11 lots. Did that answer your question?
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from council before we close the public hearing?
Mr. Joseph, or Meredith, just back to the basics, we, the basis for our decision here is really whether this does, or we agree that this meets subdivision plat requirements? Chapter 26, Article 4, is that really what we're evaluating here?
It is.
I'm sorry, again, the jurisdictional question. Our core jurisdiction here is to make that decision?
Correct.
Thank you.
Well, council, do you have any other questions or comments before we close the public hearing? It's because it's your right to ask questions and discuss it if you want, regardless of your jurisdictional discussion. Close the public hearing, the motion's in order.
Thank you. I move to approve Resolution Number 22-2013, a resolution approving a 48-lot subdivision plat with right-of-way dedications for property-zoned planned residential development located at 11885 West 38th Avenue for the following reasons. One, city council has conducted a proper public hearing, meeting all public notice requirements as required by Section 26-109 and 26-407 of the Code of Laws. Two, the requested subdivision has been reviewed by the Planning Commission, which has forwarded its recommendation. Three, the subdivision plat has been found in compliance with Article 4, Chapter 26 of the Code of Laws, with the following conditions. One, the property address be One, the property address be added to Sheet three of the plat document prior to recordation. Two, the HOA covenants be provided for staff review prior to plat recordation. Three, the city continues to work with Jefferson County Open Space to finalize the procurement of the temporary and permanent easements in the open space area. Four, property be assessed for fees in lieu of parkland dedication based on the appraised value of the land after land entitlements have been approved, subject to staff review and approval. Said fees to be paid prior to the issuance of the first building permit. And five, the developer enters into a city-standard subdivision improvement agreement with required security prior to recordation of the subdivision plat.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion to approve item number four, or item number three as stated in the packet, discussion on the main motion? Please poll the council.
That motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. We'll move on to item number four, which is Resolution twenty-four dash two thousand thirteen, Mr. Reinhardt?
Thank you. I'd like to introduce Resolution number twenty-four, two thousand and thirteen, a resolution amending the fiscal year two thousand and thirteen capital investment program budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of forty-nine thousand nine hundred and five dollars to fund the Thirty-Eighth Avenue streetscape concept design and award the contract to Enteletchi Denver, of Denver, Colorado, for, and not to exceed amount of forty-nine thousand nine hundred and five dollars. The issue, the city staff is, is preparing the total incremental implementation phase of Thirty-Eighth Avenue corridor plan adopted by city council in two thousand and eleven. Thirty-Eighth Avenue Street, Thirty-Eighth Avenue, sorry. The Thirty-Eighth Avenue streetscape concept design will provide the need and guidance for future construction on the streetscape elements within the corridor. Enteletchi has been selected to perform the corridor streetscape concept designs for work and not to exceed for nine thousand nine hundred and five dollars. A budget appropriation for said amounts required to fund this work effort. Is a motion in order.
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Resolution number twenty-four, two thousand and thirteen, a resolution amending the fiscal year two thousand and thirteen capital investment program budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of forty-nine thousand nine hundred and five dollars to fund the Thirty-Eighth Avenue streetscape concept design and award the contract to Enteletchi Denver, Colorado to not exceed amount of forty-nine thousand nine hundred and five dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion for approval, it was seconded by Mr. Pond, discussion on the main motion? Mr. Stites?
Yeah, I, one, don't we have staff upstairs that could do this?
Design engineering staff, I think, we feel it's important to have an outside design consultant. The, the design staff that we have in-house are more of an engineering-focused, and this effort will really incorporates landscape designers, urban designers, more focused on, on kind of the nuances of the, of the, the, the pretty stuff, if you will, which is why we're proposing to outsource this to that type of a design team.
And then, two, I do not think we should be spending any more money on Thirty-Eighth till we get done with the test on this thing. You know, whether this thing's working, which I doubt it is, there'll be a lot of, see what, four of us won't be on council coming up, and I don't think we should be making that decision now, but I don't think we should spend one more dime on Thirty-Eighth Avenue till we find out, till we get done with this test period. So I, I will absolutely positively vote against this. I think it's ridiculous to spend that type of money now, and I just think it should be, we should wait on it.
Any other comments or questions? Mr. Demott?
I, I also, I just think this is a bad investment. I just think the money that we have, the money that we're spending, in this case, is in the wrong place. I just feel like the programs that we're, that we're pushing on Thirty-Eighth, I feel like the paint on the streets, the flowers on the side of the street, aren't going to be the catalyst for what we're trying to achieve on Thirty-Eighth Avenue. I think the catalyst to what we're going to achieve is the economic development programs we use that incentivize business, incentivize private investment in the street. And to spend another fifty thousand on, we're not even to the point of putting anything in, this is just a design consulting. You know, we have a lot of business owners down there, a lot of property owners, some of them are frankly not doing too well. And, you know, when you walk up and down the street, you see some new businesses that we've, have opened and are busy and the kind of businesses you like to see. They, they fit in well with some of the older businesses, but a lot of those businesses and developments, residential and commercial, have been incentivized with the programs that we've put into place, TIFs, S-dips, you know, business, the business district grants, the bubble loans from Wheat Ridge twenty-twenty. I just think that a fifty thousand dollars at this point could be used a lot better to incentivize private investment in businesses that will truly, I think, be the catalyst to what, what's going to jumpstart that neighborhood. So I, I won't be supporting this plan, this part of the plan.
Any other questions? Mr. Pond?
I appreciate both comments. I will be, I will, I will be in, voting for this, and I guess I, I just want to say, say why. In my mind, this is a reasonable investment in, in planning and design that's, that's important as we continue, even in the light of the, the observation that we're doing, which, you know, I think we're, we're obviously collecting data and and, and have received data even in the last few weeks in study session. I still think this is a reasonable investment, even during that time, in order for us to be properly positioned to make good design moves and to, I think, be responsive to some of the comments from the public and some of the comments that have been, been here on this dais related to making sure that we truly are stepping up and doing, doing the right things. I will add that, that it, it means that some of the, some of the things that perhaps are even most contentious about the way it's working or not working can, can and will be evaluated, I would assume, through the scope of work as I read it. Is it, is it something to take lightly? No, it is fifty thousand dollars. I, I do think it's reasonable, and I think it's prudent as, as, as a planning effort to make sure that we're positioned to do the right things as we move forward.
I just had a quick question for council, i- is this really a planning effort? I mean, my question is, is we actually, the road diet's been going on about a year. We started in May or June or July of last year. There's another nine months ready to go. About a year. So my question is, let's say council approves this tonight and they design something based on the current street, and what happens in nine more months from now when the evaluation comes back? Can this be modified or tweaked, that you go back to four lanes or five lanes, or whatever number of lanes you're going to do?
Yes, I can answer that very quickly. This work that we're, that you would be contracting this evening is, is really giving us the theme or the concept for the street in the next step of, of your plan. So it's really immaterial in whether or not we have a four-lane street or a three-lane street. Whatever comes of this will be able to be used as the concept for any street configuration we have. We'll be talking, of course, during this work with the property owners and the public about what they want to see out there, and that may drive it one, one way or another. But this, we're really after the landscape theme, so that we know what the theme is going to be as we move forward with the final design of any sections that you want to put in place permanently.
So it doesn't matter if it's four lanes, three lanes, two lanes, this would be, can adjust based on that information?
Yes. Now, again, that may be determined, if you go with a four lane, might mean that you may have to buy some right-of-way in order to accomplish that theme. But this will give you the theme to work forward with if you want to continue to redevelop Thirty-Eighth Avenue, irrespective of the road diet.
Any other questions, or, Mr. Stites? Wait, wait, Miss Davis first, because she was.
Thank you. So when they create this theme, are they also going to look at some of the work that's already been done further east on Thirty-Eighth? I would just hate to have, you know, a little theme over here and not look at some of the monies already spent on, you know, over by the King Supers, basically from Harlan to Sheridan. You know, are they going to try and incorporate those themes so that they tie in together?
Yes, that's the intent. Again, we're going to have, we're going to have public meetings, we're going to have meetings with, with the leadership groups so that we have all of the information from all the sources and determining what it should look like on this end or the other end. And of course, the current plan calls for no changes on the east end of, of the project, so.
Yeah, I guess my, my question was more to hopefully have it mulled together.
Right, that's, that, yeah, and that's why we're bringing in someone that is an expert at that.
Okay.
Where my people are not.
Okay.
And your public works director coming in knows this, right? The new public works director?
I'm not sure.
Will he know, or she know? That the plan is to do, do a theme rather, this isn't going to say, put a planner here, put a planner there, based on three lanes?
I believe that the, the work we have in place speaks for itself, the contract will speak for itself, we have existing staff. So I may be leaving, but the rest of the folks will remain and they certainly will carry that message.
Ms. Jay?
It is tough to spend another fifty thousand dollars, but one of the things that seems to be happening is that we're doing this, and we're doing that, and we're doing this, and we're all just sort of running around. And I think that was our original idea when we talked about doing this several months ago, that we would be pulling together a overall concept that would perhaps solve what is, was really turning out to be a kind of a, little bit of a mishmash of things, you know, considering the Ridge of Thirty-Eighth and whatever's going. So it's, it's tough to think this, but I'm, I'm also wondering, should we have done this a long time ago? Any answer on that? Or is this, the time appropriate? Now that we do know that there is, there is indication of, of regionally a desire to locate in, in Wheat Ridge and, and there's an excitement generated, so maybe we've got some answer to it, but we still have to kind of clean it up.
Staff believes this is the proper sequence.
Okay.
We, we, we jump-started by putting the road diet out as a, as a test case.
Okay.
But again, if you come back to the corridor plan that you approved, the, the plan has always been to move forward with redevelopment, and this is one of those steps in that redevelopment.
Mr. Pond?
I feel compelled to say that, that I, I, I don't necessarily disagree, as I read the scope of work, that this is, that this is merely a thematic exercise. It, in fact, on bullet one, talks about curb realignment. So in fact, there is a structural implication and a conversation that will be taking place during this, and I think that's important to say. I, I agree that there will be, there will be a, a task that includes furnishings and fixtures and a general look and feel, but that's not all that's going on here, it's, I think it's a little bit more robust than that. And frankly, you know, you can look at it from the other side and say, in fact, this puts it, this, you know, we're, we're, it, it looks, again, if you read this, like we're, we're allowing people to chime in and actually involve themselves in, in public meetings and, and continue to, to do something. I, I could see, I, I can see that as, as something that's timely, so.
Mr. Stites?
Yeah, I.
Well, Mr. Reinhardt hasn't gone yet, so Mr. Reinhardt and Mr. Stites?
Either way, Mike, one more. I, I guess, you know, I, my, you know, my feeling is that, is that we have, and had, in some ways, an imperfect beginning to, to try and, and, and do what I, I think most of us want to do, which is find a way to incentivize investment and, and the regrowth of that corridor and, and to focus on it. And I think among the things that, at least I feel was a misstep, or maybe a necessary incomplete step, was the, was that the appearance of what we were doing somewhat by necessity was weak. And this gives us a way to, at least if we decide what the next step should be, whether, again, the laneage issue, I think should be discussed through this, because I agree with Mr. Pond, I interpreted it to be at least discussing that issue. But we have some, if that's the right step to take with the lane change over the long term, we do have some clear issues in the charter, and we have some difficulties in taking that step. But I don't think we can even talk about that final decision without a better, without a better overall plan of what it is we're trying to, we're trying to do. And that's why I'm going to support this, because I, I do think that, that we need to think this through a little further before we can ask ourselves and the community if we're really ready to, what that next investment looks like. And, and I think it, that, you know, I do sweat the dollars, I think, like everybody else at the dais, so I, I will be supporting this.
Mr. Stites?
Okay, this whole thing's been an experiment from the word go. And it was supposed to have been an eighteen-month experiment, then it grew to twenty-four or whatever. Still, there's quite a few unanswered questions. One, nobody can still answer me, in the charter, it says, you change the flow line on the street, it has to go to a vote of the people. And until we can get clarification on that, I don't think we should be spending any money, of which nobody can clarify that. You look right down the line, you spent a hundred and nine thousand dollars on planners, you spent fifty-six thousand dollars to install them, you spent another fifty thousand dollars to plan them and maintain them, to hire a company. That was a waste of money. We know it now. You, you know it now. We could have taken that money and put it back into some of the businesses or the buildings there, refurbished them, and, and it would have been money well spent. But at this particular time, to spend another fifty thousand dollars on Thirty-Eighth Avenue, to me, I think is the most ridiculous thing in the world till we, one, finish the nine-month, get some public input, and I don't think we have to spend fifty thousand dollars to get public input on Thirty-Eighth.
Okay, we have a motion and with seconded, discussion on the main motion, are you ready to vote? Please poll the council.
That motion carries six to two with Councilman Stites and Demott voting no.
Thank you, that move, move on to item number five, Mr. Pond?
Thank you, one second while I get my electronics up to speed here.
See, if you had, if you had paper, if you had paper or what?
The clerk did send me paper.
You had the paper, you'd be okay.
I am all right, I'm still okay. Here we go. Motion to ratify mayoral appointment to the housing authority. The members of the housing authority are appointed by the mayor and ratified by city council. Gail Miller has served in the housing authority representing District Three since two thousand and twelve. Ms. Miller resigned from the housing authority May thirty-first, two thousand and thirteen, due to time constraint. Ms. Miller's current term expires March second, two thousand and seventeen. One application was received for the vacant position, that applicant is Thomas Abbott, resident of District Three. Some motion ordered?
Motion's in order.
I move to ratify the District Three mayoral appointment of Thomas Abbott to the housing authority, term to expire March second, two thousand and seventeen.
Second. You have a motion for Tom Abbott, seconded by Mr. Stites, please poll the council.
That carries eight to zero.
Thank you. I believe that concludes our agenda for this evening. We'll move on to our presiding city manager. Do you have any comments?
I do have just one item. You were all, received an, an email with a press release from the police department earlier today regarding the status of a joint investigation with the Park County Sheriff's Office regarding the human remains that were found in Park County that might have some relation to an ongoing investigation in, in the city of Wheat Ridge. And there was a mention in there that there was going to be a press conference scheduled for, for tomorrow. And I did receive from Joe Casa, interim chief, that that's going to be at ten AM at City Hall tomorrow. So just wanted you to be aware of that. It'll be either in council chambers or the, the court building, or it could even be outside.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
I don't expect good news on that, it sounds like. Mr. Dahl?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
City clerk?
Nothing, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Reinhardt?
Not tonight, thank you.
Mr. Demott?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Starker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just have one, one item, and I'm very pleased to announce that a new restaurant is opened on is opened on, in Wheatridge at West Twenty-Ninth Restaurant and Bar at Twenty-Ninth and DePew Street, and it's now open for business at five o'clock every evening for dinner, and Saturday and Sunday for brunch. And we will be adding lunch sometime in August, so I hope that members of our community will take a minute and come by and enjoy us some hospitality. Thank you.
Mr. Stites?
First, our condolences go out. Wheatridge lost a great citizen Sunday, George Langdon. He will be missed, and our condolences go to the family. Secondly, I've been getting a lot of complaints on weeds, you know, a lot of them, and it's, the city's starting to look shabby, and there's nothing that can pull us down faster than, you know, stuff like that, so please, you know, I hate to keep harping on it, but take care of those weeds in the trash, please, and you got the parade coming up next month, so it would be a great time to relocate your home and business to Wheatridge. If you need any help, check with us or staff, we'd be happy to help you. Positive thing, help your neighbors with their weeds, please. You know what drives me crazy about weeds coming up between the sidewalk and those cracks? That just drives me bananas. Go out and spray them, do something, get rid of them. And as always, please try to find it and buy it in Wheatridge. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jay? Miss Pond, Mr. Pond?
Mr. Pond? Thank you. Happy to know I'm crack compliant, so...
I had the opportunity to go to the July third performance in the park. I had a great time, watched the Wendy Wu Band, and there was a lot of other folks joining me, I assume many from Wheatridge. I encourage everyone to get out there and do that. It's a great opportunity provided by the Parks and Rec Department. Thanks.
George, did you get those two weeds in your front yard?
Still working on them.
Ms. Langworthy?
Yes. I'm surprised, but you didn't bring this one up. I was, I didn't, I wasn't going to say anything about it, but the Next Live Local event is at your restaurant this Thursday, at, from five to seven PM. So if you want to get in, visit his restaurant. Live Local is a great way to do it. And then also, there's a produce fair, produce fair. They do one a month, June, July, and August, over at the Living Waters at sixty-four seventy-five West Twenty-Ninth Avenue. There's a lot of tables and booths with information on services and how to garden, plus they also give you a really large bag of produce, and fruit and vegetables. There's no application process, you just show up, and you can get this stuff. It runs from nine to eleven AM on Friday. That's it.
Ms. Davis?
Nothing, thank you.
I just wanted to look, council, now I had the opportunity to speak at the Jefferson County Summit on Aging last week. I was the opening speaker, and about two hundred people there talking about aging Jefferson County and the different services and programs, and I was able to discuss that Wheatridge had the senior circulator bus, and we also had the new town center apartments with the eighty-eight senior apartments, and so Wheatridge is on a, I don't know if it's the cutting edge or the bleeding edge, but we're doing a lot of things for seniors that some other communities are just looking at now. But I also wanted to mention, since we had the budget public hearing tonight, is that one of the facts that I gave out was that one in four residents in the city of Wheatridge are over sixty, and I think we should look at increasing the senior circulator bus funding for two thousand and fourteen, from that thirty thousand dollars a year to the twelve, forty-two thousand, increase it by twelve to expand that program, because not only does that senior program bus go to the higher-density locations in the city, it also makes stops at single-family homes of seniors who are still living in their house but don't necessarily drive anymore, and that's an important step, because one of the discussions was, how do you facilitate seniors, like my mom was, for example, who was ninety-three, who want to stay in their house, they don't drive, and they need those services to get around town, get groceries, and get, run errands? So my request would be is that as you're looking at the two thousand and fourteen budget, consider bumping that up by the twelve thousand dollars that was discussed earlier in the year, so... Also wanted to thank the citizens who didn't shoot off fireworks over the weekend and the last Thursday. It seemed pretty quiet around the area. I didn't see too much in Wheatridge going on. I think people were enjoying other locations, so thanks for not causing a lot of trouble in the city of Wheatridge, and noise, and fire, and everything else, so... With that, we're adjourned.